Until we're ready to go, so let's call this meeting to oil. We'll ask you, everyone would stand please, and Councilman Hucks will have our invocation of leaders in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. For Jesus, thank you for another day and the opportunity to live where you do. Help us to always be mindful that most of the time, the problems that we face are small and insignificant compared to what others around the world have to suffer through on a daily basis. Bless them as well as us with your loving kindness, your mercy, and your grace. Guide us to be humble, public servant leaders. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pray for Jesus, good to die, like the United States of America. Good to be there, brother, for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice.
All right, and before we go into audience for visitors, Rand, you can make some changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on some late news today and some conversation immediately prior to the meeting, staff would respectfully suggest the following modifications to the agenda. First, the elimination of new business item number two pertaining to the With Creek Road project. We were notified late this afternoon that VDOT has identified the resources necessary to move forward with the project without the need for additional funding from the city of Pecosin. And secondly, the suggestion is to move Agenda Items G and H, that is, the closed session and the convenient following the closed session, to just beyond on your agenda, Council Directives, which is item J.
Okay, if we don't have any objection, we don't need a vote. Anybody object to that? Okay, if not, let's move on. Next item on our agenda is our audience for visitors at this time. If there's anyone who'd like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Mr. Talke, I know you're here. We have a pre-budget public hearing. You were waiting until then?
I'd rather die now, but good.
I'm sorry?
I'd rather die now.
Okay, fine.
Then come back in April.
Okay, we'd be happy to hear from you right now.
Yeah, first, I really would like to thank you for letting me have the time to talk to you about questions I have about the funding that the city provides to the Pecosin Museum. Back in January 26, 2016, at the city council meeting, Pecosin Museum presented here and asked the city for financial support. They requested $10,000 from the city to help them operate the museum. That would help cover fixed operating costs and thus enable the museum to focus its attention on the other things like getting other sources of revenue, maintaining the property, restoration of buildings, et cetera. After that presentation, the city, you approved their request in 2019, and that amount was raised by the city to $11,500 in 2019. I personally would like you, the city council, to carefully consider Pecosin Museum's request for fiscal year 2025 funding. Please take the time and ask the museum to tell you how that funding benefits Pecosin's residents and taxpayers. Now, let me tell you why I'm asking this. This is the first time I've been to the council to look at, asking it to look at the funding a little more carefully, okay? But it's not the first time that I actually contacted you about how I have issues with how they operate the museum. Let me just tell you, if you don't know who I am, I'm a current member of the Pecosin Museum and have been for many, many years. I actually served on the museum's board as a secretary for a three-year term. In January 2022, I contacted the city council, I believe I emailed all the city council members regarding concerns I had at that time about how the museum was operating. I'm not sure whether those were discussed by council, but the museum board of directors did not make any changes based on anything I might have mentioned to you. So what were my concerns? My concerns right now are the museum actually operates with minimal, if no, if any, input to its members. They have not held a membership meeting since February of 2020. The only museum, the only members that, the only meetings that museum members can go to is their annual meeting in September. At that meeting, the only business is to elect or fill expired board seats. So I'm a member, but there's been zero opportunity for myself or any other members to meet personally with the board for over four years. Okay? Their membership form previously stated that your dues entitles you to a one-year membership in the museum, which includes invitations to all quarterly membership meetings, museum events, and periodic email updates. They just updated that form because I asked them to. I said, if you're not going to have membership meetings, take it off your membership form. So they've actually changed the form, and it no longer says there will be any membership or you're not going to get invited to. So the only information that members and the community have available about what is going on at the museum is whatever they choose to post on their website, Facebook page, or in this annual letter to the neighbors and friends that we're all going to get here shortly. It's stuck in with the first utility bill of the year. I don't believe that those letters in any way, shape, or form replace meetings that they can have for, for the members or anyone interested in finding out anything about the museum. In my own review of their 2021 and 2022 letters to friends and neighbors, they promised that they were going to erect a fundraising sign out in front of Tom Hunt's store, similar to what they did when they set up the museum, a little thermometer thing that says, here we are raising money eventually, aha, it's going to be restored. I have not seen any sign. I don't think you have either. So you can tell I've been frustrated. So in September of 2023, just four or five months ago, after the annual meeting where they didn't want to answer any questions I asked, we're just going to vote, I wrote them a letter and I emailed a copy of that letter to everybody on their board with my concerns because I had no way to meet with them in person. I felt the only way I could do it was if I sent them a letter and said, you know, answer my questions. So these are the eight questions I asked them. Will you hold a membership meeting? If so, when? Number two, instead of membership meetings, will you keep members updated through regular email updates? Three, will you post more information on Facebook? And I suggested that may be your best way to actually reach members or people who want to know what's going on. Four, and this really ticks me off, will you please post the name of all the board members? The only thing they post on the website are officers. I have no clue who the other board members are, okay? Their bylaws require that they have a nominating committee be appointed no less than two months before the annual meeting, okay? I guess they do that. That nominating committee, to my knowledge, since I left the board, has never reached out and asked anybody, any members of the community, are you interested in becoming a board member? What you do is you show up at the annual meeting, boom, they tell you who they came up with, which surprise is always themselves being elected, okay? I asked, do they have open board seats? I don't know if they filled them, but I asked, how do you plan to fill those vacancies? In my opinion, based on their bylaws, they can't be filled, if the term ends, they can't just fill it without another, without someone being elected to that position. Again, question six, what is the status of the museum's finances? The last time I could attend a meeting, in fact, I think it was before then, I asked as a member, I'd like to see your finances. I was told by the museum president, oh, we no longer are going to share that information with our members. I go, okay. At a recent city council meeting, the president's, president of the museum, Paul Whitlow, asked the council, please do not reduce the funding that you're providing to the museum, okay? As a member and a taxpayer here in town, I would really like to know myself that they don't have, that they do or do not have financial concerns. What's going to happen if you don't provide money, okay? What is the status of the funds needed to restore Tom Hunt's store? Okay? In November of 2019, okay, that was when the store moved to where it sits now on the property. In 2022, I said, they told, 2021, they're going to put some kind of sign out there that tells you what is going on, how much money they need to do anything to the store. So I asked, what happened to the sign? What is the timetable for restoration of the store? Will it take place in phase one, several phases? You know, do you have funds to actually start something? Surprise, I got zero, nothing back from the museum, okay? So that's why I'm here tonight, okay? I don't have anywhere else to go. You're going to be asked to fund them. They're going to come in with some kind of request for FY 2025, okay? I just hope that you can address that request based on what I just mentioned. I don't know what that request is going to look like, but I've gone out and looked at what is actually available in their filings to the IRS for the years 2012 to 2021. Those filings where they have to put their information, it shows a significant decline in their membership, the membership at the museum, based on how much money comes to them that's reported as membership dues. Dues in 2012 were $7,300. By 2015, just before they came to you and asked for help, it was down to $5,200. And I was on the board at the time, and it was taken them on the order of $10,000 to keep the lights on, pay insurances, and things like that. So $5,000 in dues might cover half of that where you get the rest, okay? Well, now, and then the most recent available filing, IRS filing, their 990, shows dues is $830. So I don't know how many members that is, but it can't be a whole lot, okay? And that was why, when I was on the board, I suggested to the museum, let's go to the city, see if we can get some help. That's why Mr. Whitlow came here in 2016 and asked for y'all's help, okay? The understanding was, and that was my understanding when I was on board, that request was made so they could use that money, we at the museum could use that money to cover those fixed costs. That would then allow the museum, take that off your plate. Now you're able to focus on what you need to do to improve the facilities, anything else there. So in that letter I sent to the museum last fall, I stated two things. I am concerned about the Pecosin Museum's board of directors' lack of attention regarding communication to its members, donors, they don't even, I don't even know if they acknowledge anything to the donors, as well as members of the public. And I told them, you are responsible for ensuring that the Pecosin Museum is fulfilling its mission and meeting the needs of its members and the community it serves, which is the city of Pecosin. It says, it's called the Pecosin Museum. Okay? So I'm asking you, do you have a clear understanding of the museum's finances? You really need to have, lay everything out on paper so you understand. Why are they asking for this money? But I'd really ask, what have they done with the money, okay? Maybe I don't understand their tax filings correctly, but those filings show a significant annual contributions in addition to what little amounts of membership money they get. So based on that, they should have funds to do something, okay? I actually do not know who the members of the museum are, but I know at least one member of the city council is currently a member of the museum, okay? So I encourage any of you, if you're members of the museum, anybody out there that's watching this, if you have any concerns, bring them forward. Let the city hear about it. And in my opinion, given the city's continued funding, the museum should really consider everybody in the city a member of that museum, okay? We're putting up $11,500, I don't know what they're going to ask for, what you may honor, okay? And everything I've talked to you, I have in the file here, I spent a long time collecting this information. Okay? So the last comment I want to make is in your 2024 budget, there's a page in there that lists all the cities, City of Pecosin's annual financial plan for 2024, and lists the organization the city provides funds to under the heading of community development. The Pecosin Museum is one of those, but look at the other ones get funds, okay? I, I'm not a member of those organizations, but I have no doubts that funding we give to these people and the other organizations down here that they receive, it does provide benefits to the Pecosin residents and taxpayers, okay? That's it. All I'm asking is that you take a hard look at whatever they ask you for, and don't, and make them show that what, that they actually need the money. And if they need that money, or if they have money already in their accounts, do something out there. I'm out there a lot, and I can guarantee you, it's a fantastic piece of property, lots of people take advantage of that property. Majority of them go there, they walk their dogs, they bring their kids out, okay? They're not coming there because there's a building, the houses, historical objects and things like that. That's unfortunate. It's nice, but if it's the Pecosin Museum, it's that entire space, I'd like to see them take care of it better or at least communicate what it is they're going to do and plan to do, okay? I don't have their recent financial information, they won't share it with me, so, and as far as I know, they're never going to have a meeting, so I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Talke. All right, is there anybody else in the audience? Okay. All right, let's move on to approve of minutes, please, from December the 11th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend our, we approve the minutes of the regular session, December 11th, 2023.
All right. Second. All right, motion made second, we adopt those minutes. Ms. Christie, please.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mayor, the motion carried a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you, Christie. Let's move on to item E, the public hearing is pre-budget for fiscal year 2025. There's no action required by council, but we will open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address the fiscal year 2025 budget. Yeah, that's noted, Mr. Talke. I was going to let you speak there, but I can't let you speak twice. Okay, let's close the public hearing and move on to item one, excuse me, item two, which is a resolution to authorize city manager entered into an agreement with the county of York to adjust and relocate the common boundary line between the two jurisdictions in order to eliminate uncertainty as to the physical location of the boundary and confusion regarding which locality certain property lies as specified in Virginia Code 15.2-3106, and to petition the circuit court for the county of York and the city of Pecosin for approval of the change pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-3107. Randy, any comments with that?
Um, just a couple, and Thomas is going to lead the conversation, but just know that we've been, during my time here, we've been working on this for, for going on 10 years. And there are several people to, to express appreciation for, Mr. Canela, who, who did the majority of the work and was our citizen point of contact on this, but also Mike August from the, from York County, Neil Morgan, and the county administrator's office. We've been working together on, on this iteration of this probably for the last year or so. And I'm real pleased to, to get to the point where we've got it ready for your consideration. With that, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Canela to make the presentation and I'll.
All right, there he is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, members of council, present to you tonight exactly what the mayor read. It's a long title, I won't belabor you reading it again, but the matter was properly advertised for and, and adjacent letters were sent. The consideration, and I have here in quotation marks, to establish a new boundary line between the city of Pecosin and York County. I say new because for a very long time since, well, almost since the beginning of time, our time as a town, it's been fairly misunderstood, the exact location. So three questions, I'm going to try to answer in my presentation. Where did the line start? Where is it now? And where does it need to be? I understand this is maybe a little difficult to see. I made some last minute changes to this today to try and make it a little easier to understand. But what you see here, Mr. Mayor, is a plat, you see, top right corner of it says Tana Pecosin, and the date on it is December 1951. This is the plat that was recorded, that established our boundary line with York County's, see, I've overlaid some red lines there. It was done basically with four concrete monuments, two primarily, one on the south side of the map, near Carriage Chapel Road, one at the north at Yorktown Road, another on Yorktown, and then one at the end of Lambs Creek. When this process started, we asked a surveying group to locate those monuments, if they could, and give us an idea of, of where this line was. They were unsuccessful in doing so, given their age and given that they were located in marshes and, and properties that aren't really accessible now, or how they were in, in 51. Anyways, this is, that, what I'm showing you here is two things. The red line is the proposed boundary line, I'm going to show you a much, much clearer picture in a second, but the blue is the existing line, existing according to our understanding with York County and the GIS information that we have used and they have used for decades. I show you this image just because you can see the property lines a little more clearly. This is an image that some of you, if not all of you, have, have seen, and it was originally prepared by staff in York County. I did make some small edits to it. And you can see the red line, the proposed boundary, and the blue line, the current boundary. The reason this is coming to you all, Mr. Mayor, and went before the board of supervisors in York County, is because based on where we understand the line, there are about two dozen parcels, on, both on our side and theirs, so two dozen combined, that are split parcels that the corporate line runs through, whether it be a, a backyard, or portions of someone's front yard in this case, on the southern side of the map on Carriage Chapel, and even one gentleman at the top of the map, who, who's a family member came in and he jokes that his house is in Pecosin, most of it, but he sleeps in York County. So there are a few of these instances throughout, about half a dozen. What we've done in consultation with York County, their administrator, Mr. Morgan, now retired administrator, city manager and Mike August, their right away agent, has identified the parcels that were split, and we have, we presented to the board of supervisors and now you, a recommended solution. And that, in that, we eliminate all of these split parcels with the exception of three. We thought that it was in the best interest of, of this city to keep three parcels split. If you can see the laser at the top of the map, there are the three parcels that I'm pointing to, and you can see that the old line, or the current line, runs through pretty much the middle of those, and, and will continue to do so. And that's our recommendation, Mr. Mayor, because those parcels have frontage on Victory Boulevard and really serve as the gateway to the city. So we thought to, in order to preserve some zoning and development interest there, that we would keep those parcels split. This is, I just took away the, the old line, and, and thus you can more clearly see the proposed boundary. And basically, Mr. Mayor, we started it where, where it was at Carriage Chapel, and we brought it up a natural wood line along the side property line of the first affected lot, and then followed existing identifiable property lines through the Huntwood subdivision and the rears of the Woods of Tab, and continued it to what is now some parcels at the legacy of Pecosin, and brought it to the rear of the property lines on Elliott. We crossed Victory, where we are keeping those three parcels I mentioned, split, and then followed existing property lines, and then came right down, came down New Yorktown Road as it currently exists, and back up to Lambs Creek. These are very identifiable locations, and with your approval tonight, the process will move forward, the, the proposed line will be resurveyed, monuments placed, and we, along with staff in York County, will be able to, with confidence, tell our citizens and theirs where the entirety of their property lies. So the action necessary, Mr. Mayor, is, is your approval of the approval resolution tonight. York County approved their, their, I'll say, sister resolution in December by a vote of five to zero, and with your approval tonight, then the city manager will move forward with the county administrator in York. They will petition the circuit court, and should the circuit court find that the process was carried out according to the code, then we'll approve the new boundary line. I, that's the end of my presentation, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to elaborate or any, answer any questions you may have.
Well, first of all, Thomas, that was a tremendous presentation. Thank you. There's a lot of work put into that. Any questions to Thomas? I know we've dealt with this for a long time, looks like we're having a resolution. Okay? Thank you, Thomas. All right, is there a motion, please?
We should open the public.
I'm sorry. We'll open the public hearing first and ask if there's anyone in our audience who would like to address that issue. Thank you for that, Randy. Okay, hearing ended, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll have a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the county of York to adjust and relocate the common boundary line between the two jurisdictions in order to eliminate unnecessary, uncertainty as to the physical location of the boundary and confusion regarding in which locality certain properties lie, as specified in Virginia Code, paragraph 15 dash two, or point two dash 3106, and to petition the circuit court for the county of York and city of Pecosin for approval of the change pursuant to Virginia Code, paragraph 15, uh, point two dash 3107.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Donald seconded, I thought.
I don't know, I didn't hear any, either one of them. So if we got a second, that's good. Okay. All right, Ms. Christie, please.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hesse.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to new business, first item, ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the Isit Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, making additional appropriations fiscal year 2024, and for the general fund. Chief, how are you? Good.
It's the Byrne Justice Assistance Grant makes federal funds available to localities to help support efforts to reduce crime and improve public safety. And the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services has been designated by the Justice Assistance Program to administer a portion of those funds reserved for Virginia to make those funds available to local units of government. In December, on December 14th, we were notified by DCJS that we were slated for an award of $2,619 for fiscal year, federal fiscal year 2023 funds. And, you know, in our continued efforts to improve the services we provide to our citizens, our intent, should you accept this grant, is to acquire new digital cameras for our patrol officers in the field for documenting crime scenes and evidence when they're doing investigations out in the field, to, to improve some very antiquated equipment that we currently have. And so I'll answer any questions.
Any questions to the chief? I hope you'll be back here at every meeting with those same kind of comments. Any questions to the chief? All right. Thanks, sir. Let's have a motion for the resolution, please.
Mr. Mayor.
The ordinance, I apologize.
I propose an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the Byrne Justice Assistance Grant for making appropriate, additional appropriations for fiscal year 2024 for the general fund.
Okeydoke. Second. All right, motion made second, we adopt the ordinance. Any concerns, comments? Any questions? Not. Ms. Christie, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hesse.
Aye.
Mayor, the vote carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Christie. And then three on the new business resolution, making an appointment to the York Pecosin Social Service Advisory Board. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution appointing Ms. Judy Wiggins to the York Pecosin Social Services Advisory Board.
Okay.
Second that.
All righty. Judy's done that for a long time, and she did a really good job there, and I know she will again. All right, we need a motion for the resolution. Did you already make it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and I had a second. Okay. We had a motion made second, we adopt the resolution. Ms. Christie?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Mayor Hesse.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five.
Okay. Now we're going to move G to where J is, we're the council directors now. Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, sir. Comments to the city manager? Just a couple, and I know you're going to speak to one, Mayor, so I'll, I'll be real brief on that, but I just want to, to acknowledge and thank the, the quick response of our fire department. We had a small fire at Schooners over the weekend, and in part due to their quick action and professionalism, it remained a small fire. I'm not quite sure when they'll be back up in action, but it could have been way worse, but their quick, uh, quick response and quick action made it as good as it could be. And additionally, we, we ran another fire call today on Little Florida, and a very similar thing, a quick, quick reaction by our folks helped to make things a lot better than it otherwise could be. And those are just two of the small things that, that we do every day, are, that our, that our people, all of our public employees do every day. And it just, wanted to acknowledge that. And that's all I have, sir. I know you're going to speak to the HRSD project.
Okay. Let's move on to council directors, are there anybody?
No, I'd just like to thank the citizens that came out tonight to speak to the city council for paying attention to the city government, and thank those at home doing the same thing, and encourage all your friends to also pay attention to the city government. I, I second the comments on that fire department, they did some fast work this morning, okay? They did, they did a really great job, and all of the city staff for that is first class.
All right, thanks, sir. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no comments.
Okay.
Um, I did want to mention Food Bank, since Councilman, I will mention that, February the 8th, at the municipal building, 8:30, Pecosin Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. All right, let me just stress one item. I know. I did forget the vice mayor, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Not a problem, I don't have much. I did want to, my condolences to Councilman Fize's wife, his, her mother, his mother-in-law passed away yesterday morning, and that's where he is tonight, so Jim.
By the way, we, we did send a letter out, I think it went out today, to the family.
That's all.
Oh, okay. All righty. I know that there are many irritated people in the community regarding the HRSD work on With Creek Road, and let me just say, this council was just as irritated as, as is the staff with regard to the speed of that work and even the way that they leave their construction site afterward. I think the city, the staff yesterday, actually Friday, I guess, took many calls from residents that were hitting a, a metal plate. They, hopefully they've secured that today, but we've invited the project manager to come to our next meeting, which is February 12th. February the 12th, to explain to, to council and also to the community, you know, exactly what's going on up there, what, what is the estimated time of finishing that project. I'm not sure it's going to be really good news, but we'll have an opportunity to, to question and, and let the community know where that project is. All righty, we're going to move ourselves into closed session, and Mr. Vice Mayor, if you take us there, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I propose a closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711, parentheses, alpha eight of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss and to consult with legal counsel pertaining to specific legal matters requiring legal advice by counsel.
Okay. All right, we have a motion made second, we go to closed session. Ms. Christie?
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hesse.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried a vote of five to zero.
All right, thank you, Christie. All right. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.[400.87]
Okay, we are reconvened from our closed session and we need to certify that please.
Mr. Mayor.
Right. I suppose we only talked about what we were authorized legally to talk about in the closed session.
Okay. Second. Is there one?
Second.
All right, there's a motion made second that we certify our closed session. Ms. Christie, please.
Councilman Huggs.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mann.
Thank you ma'am. Any other business? Anybody have anything else? Okay, if you need a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Second. Motion to adjourn, Ms. Christie.
Councilwoman Bunting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Huggs.
Aye.
Mayor Hepburn.
Aye.
Mr. Mann, the motion prayed by a foot of five dizzy wrists.